Good morning. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised our City Council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you now the humblest way we know how. Come about his and humble hearts in recognizing our need of a Savior. God, we cannot lead, we can't govern, we can't make decisions without you. We need your divine intervention even throughout this meeting, God. Continue to bless our mayor, bless this council, bless every department head. God, just lead us in the right direction, God, that we'll be pleasing in your sight, God. And at the end of the day, we're going to make sure we give you all of the praise, all of the glory, and every bit of the honor it belongs to you for the things you've done, the things you're doing currently, and also the things you're going to do. As always, we remember to lift up Israel in our prayers, your chosen people, watch over them and keep them, God. It's our obligation to pray for them. We thank you for this meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. In all that agrees, say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and City Council meeting held on October 24th. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 20th through the 26th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations, and Mayor Ford has a couple this morning. Thank you, Mayor.
So, thank you, Mr. President. I want to, we started giving out service pins for years of service, and we've had a lot of these, we've handed out, and once we catch up, then it will happen when someone hits an anniversary, five year, 10 year, 15 year, so forth. But we have three special ones today for special people. Jason Wilson, would you come forward? Five years.
(laughing).
Michael, you're going to picture.
Are we going to do these individually or?
Of course.
Yeah.
This is special.
They ship those extra anyway.
Five years. Thank you, thank you. There's no doubt. Mr. Lee Roberts, 100 years. 10 years.
If so, that's the most.
So, we got on the elevator with Lee, and Lee said, "What do we do with those pins?" I said, "I'm handing them out to people, it's got anniversary." I said, "Oh, God, you got one." Well, and let me just say this, there's no doubt in my mind that each one of these are embedded with a listening device, so just keep that in mind. That's a camera. Ms. Iba, would you read this one, please? I see it, yeah. So, I had cataract surgery, and I'm getting there, and I'm going to read one of them, but I'm going to ask Ms. Iba to read this one.
This is a mayor's commendation. The Alabama Expanding Learning Alliance, AELA, works to ensure Alabama youth, families, and communities have access to high-quality programming during out-of-school time that promotes positive development and lifelong learning. Every year, the National After School Alliance selects a special group of individuals to be an After School Alliance Youth Ambassador. The Youth Ambassador Program connects and develops each ambassador through advocacy skills, sharing their experiences, and spreading the word about after-school programs. Youth ambassadors also lead the annual After School Alliance Youth Voice Week, joining advocates at the After School for All Challenge in Washington, D.C., to speak to members of Congress and their staff. This year, 10 individuals were chosen from across the nation, and among these 10 students is Gadsden's own Willeney Sales. Ms. Sales is a Gadsden City Schools 21st Century After School Program attendee. Ms. Willeney Sales was one of 10 chosen for this prestigious honor. She is 14 years old and in the 9th grade at Gadsden City High School. She has participated in after-school programs all of her elementary years. During her 6th and 7th grade years, the middle school didn't have an after-school program due to COVID-19, but the after-school program at her elementary school allowed her to volunteer there. She felt like a role model to the elementary students as she helped them with various tasks, such as arts and crafts, restroom breaks, and homework. This experience for Willeney allowed her to grow as a leader by giving the elementary students the same great experience she had when she was there. I commend Willeney for being selected for this wonderful opportunity in representing the City of Gadsden and the State of Alabama in Washington, D.C., and for being a leader amongst her peers. Keep up the great work. Signed, Craig Ford, Mayor.
If you've had an impact or had something to do with her, please come forward for a group photo also, or parents. Let's do one of just us first. Thank you. All right, now the group. Yeah, can we go up in front of the council for goodness sake, girl? You haven't changed a lick. Go along. Oh, that's good. I don't blame you. Right? No. Mr. President, as they're sitting down, we're going to ask her to say a few words, please.
Oh, sure, please. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for recognizing me and just all these opportunities that I'm blessed with. I want to say just thank you for all the support, my parents, and I want to give all praise to God. You know, I couldn't do this without God, and just, I just want to thank everybody for all the support.
Thank you. Amen. And, Mr. President, I didn't know, but I was just informed, we have the Alabama After School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Caldwell, in the audience. Please stand.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you all for what you do for our education, and we had traveled around with Christina and John to every elementary school. We have four left, about naming the kangaroos, and we're letting the 5th graders name them. And let me tell you, it is, I'd rather do that than be mayor. But it is a lot of fun to see these schools and these teachers and these kids. They are phenomenal, so we're excited about that. Let me get my glasses. If you're Reverend Weathers, if you'd come forward with the rest of your church members Seems like Ms. Menes is a regular here.
That's right. She's a hard worker.
That's right. So, this is a proclamation from the City of Gadsden. Whereas Antioch Baptist Church was organized in 1980 in a log cabin in Nolan Station, which is the area where Goodyear Tire and Rubber is located. Under the leadership of First Pastor Reverend R.W. Pope, the church moved to its current site due to land being donated to them by Lemuel and Martha Green. The church consisted of 20 members when a straight plank building was erected in 1892. A more modern church was built in 1906 under the leadership of Reverend C.A. Mallory, but it was not until 1943 into the leadership of Reverend E.B. De Ampert that a new brick church building was built. This new building was contained an annex and an auditorium, as whereas by May of 1992, Reverend Larry G. Weathers was named the pastor, and under his leadership, the Antioch Baptist Church flourished. In 2005, an annual pledge program was developed and named the Love Center due to its regular benevolence that's contributed to help those in need. A food ministry called the ABC Soup Kitchen was established in 2006 to provide a nutritious meal to people who are hungry. A television ministry was also started by televising the Sunday services. And whereas in February 2007, the Family Life Center was officially opened to help serve the members of the congregation and people within the community as well. There are several programs held in the Family Life Center, such as a cooking program for young girls, tutoring, exercise classes, a fitness program, and a recreational gym, and a women's Bible study class. And whereas during the 133 years of church existence, there have been 10 ministers to serve and lead the church to new levels. Each pastor that has come through Antioch Church advanced the betterment of the church by adding classrooms, restrooms, Bible study, witnessing outreach ministry, a daycare facility, and many auxiliary services to the youth, women, and men of the congregation. And now therefore, I Craig Ford, Mayor of Gadsden, Alabama, do hereby join with the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming Sunday, November 5th, 2023, as Antioch Baptist Church Day. All right, everybody, let's go stand over here, Reverend Weathers, and get a picture
Good morning to everyone. Thank you for this proclamation, this award. Thank you all for what you do for our city, and we're just blessed to be able to do a few things. I want to say this, never had a chance to say this. Representative Ford and the Senator Means were people who really helped us down through the years. They didn't have to. They enabled us to do some after-school programs, a back practice program where we fed kids as they went home on Fridays, and tutoring or whatever because of their contributions. And I really want to thank you, and I tell people all the time, if he's running, he ain't got to come to me. I'm always going to be in his corner because he's been good to us. Appreciate what you all do, and just keep pushing. Y'all lifting the city up. We're praying, and I believe you all are too. I see Kent, and it makes me, I'm old. I coached that boy a long time ago. It makes me old. It makes me old. When you look at Kent, you see he's old. But again, we thank you. God bless you all.
That's right. Thank you. I have to admit, that's, when I first met Larry Weathers, he was Coach Weathers. And I want to tell y'all something, he could, he was, he was, he was an outstanding football player and athlete, and even back in those days, he was, he was a real man among men, I can promise you, so. And congratulations on your honor and your service to our city. Right now, I'll call you Reverend Weathers.
Either one.
Either one. All right. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. All right, item eight, we'll move on, is unfinished business. This is an ordinance amending City Code Section 102-92. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. This is regarding health and life insurance premium rates for retirees, and amends the rate to continue health insurance coverage to 45% of the current premium for each year. It also specifies the Medicare supplemental policy selected by the city as AM wins. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3522 for T-shirts. The purchasing department has recommended the bid be awarded to Model Ts. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing changes within the Community Development Block Grant, which is the CDBG program. This is to authorize the mayor as the certifying official of the CDBG program to approve any amendments needed within the program that do not require compliance with competitive bid laws in accordance with HUD guidelines. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated for MPO project. This is for plans and specifications for the resurfacing of Walnut Street from South 5th Street to South 12th Street, and the amount is $84,285. This is an MPO project, and the city's 20% share is $16,857. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to say thank you to the mayor's office and the engineering department and everybody involved with the MPO. This is a great project that will have a really significant impact on my constituents, so thank y'all for your action on this.
Clerk, will you, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 comes under first readings. This is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of properties to the Gadsden Land Bank Authority. This conveys 20 city-owned properties to the Gadsden Land Bank Authority. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 13 is reserved for new business. I believe we have an item today.
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. This is added in addition, if I'm not mistaken, to a resolution that was proper for us on last week, amending, amending memorandum of understanding between the City of Gadsden and Gadsden City Board of Education. The mayor is authorized to execute amending, amendment of memorandum of understanding between the City of Gadsden and the Board of Education. This is included to transfer Joseph T. Robinson Park in Carver Square, AKA Gilania Harris Memorial Square, to the City of Gadsden. This gives an addition to those items that we mentioned last week, but however, also this gives and grant opportunity that is available to the city to do some upgrades and some changes to those properties. Now, one property which is vacant, has nothing on it, previously had a park there, and with division of the administration, the mayor and administration, there are some opportunities there to create, or recreate, a family environment there, fun and safe for that community, which is well-needed. Also, it offsets some costs and things of that nature, what it relates to overhead with the Board of Education, as well as the city with some changes or some exchanges, rather, of some properties. So, I present this today as an item to, to suspend the rules to bring up today.
All right. Second. Thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Thank you. Also, just to make this very clear, I do support this opportunity, and I think this would be a great, this is a great exchange, as well as an addition to the community. So, now I will also ask for a passage.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. I believe that's all the new business. Item 14 is department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any of those today? I believe Ms. Wethington is coming forward.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for letting me come today. Just want to give some updates on parks and recreation and some things that we've been doing. This weekend, we'll have seven teams in our youth flag football league moving forward and playing in the ARPA State Tournament in Vestavia. EYSL will finish up its fall league this Saturday, and will start the end-of-season tournament next week, November 6th through 9th. And we'll have four teams that will play in the ARPA State Soccer Tournament, November 18th through 19th in Nuthen. We have 10 coed teams, adult coed teams, that play on Monday evenings, and their season ends November 13th. And right now, our largest thing is the youth basketball registration. It is open until November 13th. Our next new coaches meeting will be November 15th at East Gadsden Community Center at 5:30. We are asking everybody to get registered, all the players to register right now at gadsden wreck desk dot com. We have over 350 currently registered, we're expecting over 1,000. If anybody wants to coach, we need a lot of volunteers to coach these teams. Please contact Darrell R. Laura at 256-549-4680. Carver and East Gadsden are open all weekdays, so please contact each center for all the program activities there. The Coaster River Drawdown has less than our boat launches right now, but the water will come back up November 6th, but the bait store has been doing tremendous sales in live bait, because I believe the kapiar kind of moving in and fishing well right now. But we'll be back on November 11th and 12th with the Coaster River Team Trail Classic, finishing up their season. This next month, we'll be moving our senior dances to the first and third week due to holidays being on the second and fourth week, so we'll have one this Friday for our senior dance at the Downtown Civic Center. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it. Chief?
My report's not quite as fun as Jen's, but I'm sure y'all have all noticed it's extremely dry right now, and we're discouraging people to burn in the city limits and in the county. Let me read you something that was prepared by our fire marshal. The National Weather Service has issued a fire weather watch, which includes Edgewall County. This watch will be in effect from Tuesday, October 31st at 1:00 p.m. till Wednesday, November 1st at 7:00 p.m. A fire weather watch means that a critical fire weather conditions are forecasted to occur. These include winds of 10 to 15 miles an hour and humidity as low as 20 to 25%. Also, October 27th, the Alabama Forestry Commission reissued their fire alert for all 67 counties in the state. The northern 32 counties, including Edgewall County, were listed as no burn permits to be issued. With the current conditions and these two alerts and watches, the Fire Marshal of the City of Gadsden is highly discouraging any burning within the city limits of Gadsden. This includes burning of leaves, trees, shrubs, campfires, or any type of refuse. Any reports of burning could result in a fine or other penalties. The normal restriction from ADM for no burning during summer months will be lifted on November 1st, but due to these current conditions, no burn permits will be issued until favorable conditions are allowing to burn. The rain that we got last night and this morning was minuscule at best, it's going to take a pretty good rain before we can burn again, so if y'all have any questions, I'll answer them. If not, that's it.
Yes, Councilor Ross. We've had, I don't know, I'm sure you're aware of it, we've had a few, the hikers and bikers up there, the trails have found a few fires, like on the trail or right beside the trail, it doesn't even have rocks around them. Do we? Is anybody up there walking at night, or kind of like seeing or checking into that and see who might be doing that, or because that could be real.
It's not safe for me to put the firefighters in there at night unless there's an actual fire, but I will be talking with other agencies to see what we can get done up in there, and we have been made aware of that over the weekend, that there were two fires that we're aware of on the walking trail.
All right, sounds good.
Yes, sir.
So, a lot of people don't realize this is annual. I think the no burn permit is supposed to be lifted on tomorrow. You're saying it's going to be extended a little further outside, I mean, even though we're into November, people still would not be able to get those permits.
November 1st is when the ADM no burn is lifted. That is because of the air quality, and several counties that are joined with Jefferson County, we're one of them, so what we burn here affects their air quality. Tomorrow, that will be lifted, but we can't write burn permits just strictly because of the drought, and I have no way of forecasting, it could be weeks, it could be a month, until we get a substantial amount of rainfall.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just one last question. Would this be inclusive of residential fire pits? I mean, like in a backyard setting or something like that?
If a neighbor calls right now and complains, we'll have to come extinguish it, which may be as simple as asking you to take your garden hose and put it out.
Right.
For the next two days, today and tomorrow, no open burning at all. Now, if someone has a grill, of course, we're not going to put out your grill.
Yeah.
But any open flames in the City of Gadsden will be put out over the next two days. After the next two days, when the humidity comes back up, you can have your fire pits or whatever again. It's just, it's imperative right now to keep us from having a large woods fire that we don't have any open burning.
We should maybe consider doing one of those tall fire watch towers up on Bellevue, and Chris could crawl up in there and just observe the mountain.
That would be really fun.
But today and tomorrow, no open burning at all. After tomorrow, which will be Thursday, you know, if someone wants to have a fire pit, that will be fine, but we're not writing any burn permits for leaves and the such until it rains again.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
All right, any other reports from committees or boards, departments?
I'll say the police thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to do that, please.
Yeah. Okay. Thank, is it my turn? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, I was going to start with mayor, council, so you can go.
All right. So, Chief Jaggers just texted me this, and I did forget, Chief, and I apologize, but tonight, the Gadsden Police Department Labor Council, along with the FOP, partnering with the City of Gadsden, Gadsden Police Department, Edgewall County Sheriff's Office, the Fire Department, the EMA, the firefighters, the local union, 454, AMED Amelants, Advantage Emergency Medical Services, and the Gadsden Police Department Labor Council. Sounds like a big event. So, it's trunk or treat at the venue, and it starts tonight at 6:00 p.m. So, there's no closing time on it, but the way we've been seeing these Halloween events, I'd go early. So, Chief, is that pretty good?
Yes.
Okay. We want to also thank Christina, I went to, I'm not sure what the name of it is, John, the Christmas Halloween at the Falls, where they dressed up like characters.
Trick or Treat Village.
Trick or Treat Village. But they had over 5,000 people come through the Falls. It was amazing what she does and her staff and Janet, how they put that on together, and they were, it was absolutely just unbelievable. Kids from all over, I mean, I'm talking Huntsville, Birmingham, and it's an annual event. So, I want to start out with a situation on turn time. We have addressed this as well as we can. Public Works, we have visited with the neighbors three days in a row. We have taken numerous phone calls. The stump machine is broken, we cannot help that. We sent it back to Birmingham, it's a computer issue. So, we have sectioned off the sidewalk, we put up cones, we put up barricades, we put up yellow fencing. I am a military, I'm a logistics officer, it is safe. Now, if somebody doesn't think it's safe, I'm sorry, but it is safe. If somebody gets hurt, they're trying to get hurt, so I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Public Works has done everything we can do, it's just stuff hap- It's just stuff happens. They filled it in with gravel, and they've taken care of it. So I think everything's fine. There was rebar in the ground. They took it up so nobody could trip over it. So it's a smooth surface now, and it's all sectioned off. So I apologize to the people on Turntown if it's a sore to them, but I think when it's dark, they won't see it. Hopefully, they'll see the orange fence and go around it.
Yeah.
So trick or treating, of course, is tonight. Everybody stay safe. We had an excellent time yesterday with employees of City of Gaston. We asked everybody to dress up. As our city attorney said, I didn't think five people would do it. But we ended up having probably 30 or 40 people dress up, Ivan Nelson, and the clerk's office came as a team of goblins. So we were excited to see them. I didn't know who they were. I said, who's in the goblins? And, but we had, the trash crew was the most unique, won first place. They wore bags of trash around them. And it was a lot of fun. If you hadn't seen the pictures, go on the Facebook account. It helped build morale, and we had a lot of, a lot of fun with the thing. And I gave out prizes, the first, second, and third, out of my pocket, not taxpayers'. I want to thank our Gaston Police Department and our Gaston Fire Department. Unfortunately, bad things do happen in this city from time to time, but we react to them. We want to thank our police. We had a murder in Alabama City, and it wasn't, it was just a situation where he said this, he said that. It was a targeted murder, and police located the vehicle that night and the weapon, and then had the victim, the person turn themselves in two days later. So we were able to apprehend them. We pray for the family, and we hope justice is served. But I want to thank our police department and fire department. And as soon as something like that happens, I want y'all to know the chief contacts me, no matter what time it is at night. I talk to him. He lets me know. And if he needs us there, I'll be there. Councilman Avery did, I think he was there. And there's a lot of talk going on about what we need to do in the community to help our streets be safer. The grant, we received a grant for $326,000. I want to thank Brett, Tina, Ruth, and the rest of the team, Rod and John, and then our grant writer that y'all allowed us to hire. It's a $326,000 Safe Streets Grant. It allows us to determine what streets are not safe, and then it allows us to go to step two to apply for the next grant, which is a larger amount. Also, our trips to Washington, D.C. paid off with the Department of Transportation, so we're very excited about that. We had a great movie night, our first event, last Sunday night at the AMP. I don't know if y'all got the memo on it. I don't know. We tried our best to send it out. I did get texts from a lot of y'all saying you're out of town. We also had a lot of churches having trunk or treat. But it was excellent. We had almost 200 kids show up with family members. We showed a movie on a big screen, and it was a lot of fun. We had the theater of Gaston perform, and we were very impressed by what Janet and John did for that event. We're getting ready for Christmas on the Falls, and we've had overwhelming response to Christmas on the Coosa ice skating. So this thing's going to be big. So we're getting prepared. So John has called in the troops, and we're all, Parks and Rec is rallying together. We've already had schools contact us. It's going to do field trips during the day. We weren't planning on that, but we are now. And we're working with one of our local restaurants downtown where they can go and get a meal for a very inexpensive thing. And then we're looking, the mayor's office is looking to sponsor our elementary schools to come and skate. So we think this is a great thing. The State of the City event is next Tuesday. This is November the 7th at 6:00 p.m. at the venue. Everyone is invited. It's been a year, and so we're going to give a State of the City address, and we just ask you to attend. We sent out some invitations, and then we also were pushing on social media. Saturday night, I had a good night. I was able to go to something called the Coffee Bar on Broad Street. Thought I was going to get a cup of coffee. I was very enlightened, but I had a lot of fun. I'll just leave it at that. Good group of young people out in the community having fun safely, and the police was present. And it was, it was a lot of fun. Then I went down to Carver and got to go see some trick or treaters. And then I had some visit with some of the community members down there with Councilman Avery and his friends, and got to talk with them and had a lot of fun there, too. So my wife went with me, John Moore and Kelly Moore, so you know we behaved. But we had a lot of fun. I want to thank Councilman Avery for having us down there. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Appreciate the update. Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Beck. First of all, let me say congratulations to Woolony Sales for her accomplishment as one of 10 after-school ambassadors. Congratulations, and thank you for your passion and your enthusiasm for after, your after-school service. And then let me congratulate Pastor Weathers and Antioch Baptist Church. They're in District One as they celebrate their 100th anniversary. Thank you for what you do in the community, and thank you for your ability to, I've watched you through the pandemic and post-the-pandemic, your ability, the vision of your pastor and the church leadership, for your ability to pivot and remain relevant during the pandemic and post-the-pandemic, providing the community with the necessary things that were needed during the pandemic and post-the-pandemic. Thank you to the mayor and to the city workers and the mayor's office, the council, for everything that we're doing to continue to move forward. Again, I say change is challenging, but I think we are approaching it with a very positive attitude, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to echo Councilwoman Latham. Congratulations to Ms. Sales being chosen as one of a few students from the state of Alabama. That's a big honor. Also, to Pastor Weathers, we just appreciate you. Congratulations. Pastor Weathers is always encouraging young pastors. He's always pulling the young pastors aside, sharing wisdom. Even his few minutes up here, he challenged us, keep lifting the city. Let's keep lifting up the city of Gaston, keep speaking positive. And I don't know about you, I'm still believing the best is still yet to come. Just want to remind us to, I know a lot of churches and organizations have had their trunk or treats, but there'll still be a lot of babies on the street tonight. So please, let's watch out for them. Thank you to our mayor, Mayor Ford, and the council, and all the department heads. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to appreciate and give a little praise to all of those organizations and people that are doing community efforts for the reasons to draw the community closer. Want to thank everyone on this past weekend that had events in District Three, go particularly to the Tuscaloosa Avenue area. But I also want to give heed and warning to those that just have no recourse of life of someone else's. While there were many kids that was on the street as we tried to create a safe environment for our families to trick or treat, we had just young people, for the most part, that just continued to heavily speed on the main road there on Tuscaloosa Avenue with children present and families present. So listen, be cautious, have some, some thought of others' life. As I make segue to giving condolences to the family of those that lost, of the life lost this weekend, want to challenge our young people to reach out to your council member or to your pastor or to your mayor, to a leader, to someone to help us to be creative in what the needs are for you, your community, those groups that you fellowship with. If it's something that's in the city that is, you're not interested in or that we don't have or that you are interested in, that we can either look at, please communicate with us. Listen, as the youngest person up here, I try to, to fellowship in a lot of you all areas so that I can see what you do, speak with you, make sure that you feel that you have someone that is, I guess, easily in close proximity to you to communicate. However, if you do not relay that message, I do not know what it is that you like to do. I don't know what you're looking for. So that communication piece is very important so that we can at least alleviate a lot of this nonsense as it relates to violence that we're having. It is very important because we are putting too many young people in the ground for nonsense, and we are, we are trying to heal too many broken hearts, mothers and fathers with this. That one life affects many. And so it breaks my heart to continue, have to deal with this in our community. But nevertheless, please believe that I am willing and able and wanting to work as it relates to creating avenues to go in a different direction other than violence. Listen, the city has a lot of things going on, and I, we had a conversation of communication and technology on this, this past weekend with some people. Visit the City of Gaston Facebook site. Visit Channel 99. There are a lot of activities going on. You can see these meetings instead of calling and asking, hey, what happened at council meeting today? Listen, it is, it is published. It is there. Please look at it. It is very educational, and it gives you an insight on what's going on in the city in which you live. It's very important. And then if you have any feedback, it gives you opportunity. Please call me then, and we can have that conversation at any time, day or night. Lastly, I want to thank these group of guys that this weekend, we just got together and just cleaned up, went from one end of Tuscaloosa Avenue to another end. And so they are interested in going into other parts of the community as it relates to District Three, as we also are willing to help other districts. Also, want to give a big shout out to all of those that went out to the Grace Heritage, I believe, event to help the Boy Scout as it relates to creating grave spaces for those unknown that are buried there at the Sixth Street Cemetery. So many things are going on. Please involve yourself, and if you have something that is going on that no one knows about, please inform us so that we can help in these efforts. Good things, good things are happening. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council. Councilman?
I just want to start by saying I've heard a lot of people talk about taking calls day and night, any hour of the night. I would appreciate it if you called me during the day, please. There's, if it's a pressing matter, there's several other folks up here that obviously are okay with 3:00 a.m. calls. I'd rather not receive those. All joking aside, today's Halloween. Obviously, for those of you guys who know or are longtime residents of Gaston, typically the historic district downtown, which is in District Five, is very, very heavily populated. We'll see somewhere between probably 3,000 to 5,000 children on the streets of Turntown and Argyle and Harrelson tonight. There's tons of cars. In the past, we've had mounted police in the area. There's been carriage rides. There's bike rides, these witches rides. Long story short, there's a ton of pedestrians in this area. So please be careful in and around downtown tonight. It'll definitely be very crowded and a lot of traffic and a lot of little ones walking the streets. And from experience, I can tell you, running out in the middle of the street at any given time with no notice, so please just, just exercise an extra level of caution, and feel free to bring your kids over. The families and homeowners in that area go to great lengths to decorate their homes and put up a lot of lights and yard decorations and all this stuff. So it really is a great experience. So you're encouraged. Anybody is welcome to come. If you can find a park on the side of the street, just get out and start walking. And I promise you will end up going home with a trunkload of candy, literally. The best trunk or treat you've ever got, where you can fill your trunk up, basically. And thank you to the mayor's office and Tina King and the Public Works and everybody who responded. For those of y'all who don't live on Turntown, this is a big fat non-issue for you guys. But given the amount of children that are going to be on the sidewalk, it was kind of an issue leading up to this year's Halloween. There was a large tree, and when I say large, it was about two-thirds of the sides of this entire bench here that was in the city right away. So several months ago, they started the process of taking this tree out. It had died. It was probably close to 100 feet tall. That project was culminating over the last week or so when we ran into an issue with a stump grinder. So in response, understanding how big tonight was, the mayor's office and Public Works scrambled. They'd done a great job to, to prepare the sidewalk and to secure it and to, to rope it off so that it is safe and secure, and everybody's happy. And I can tell you, of course, Mayor, my phone's been blowing up for the last couple of days, too. And I can tell you, everybody, at least right now, on Turntown is very happy with the situation. So give it about five seconds. That'll probably change. But for now, we'll celebrate the victory. So thank you guys for, for doing everything you could to accommodate this big night on Turntown. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra?
Also, Happy Halloween. Another reminder is that we will have temperatures that will dip to 30-something degrees in the morning. So again, stay safe, stay warm. And also, Sunday, we want to fall those clocks back. So just a reminder that Sunday is that time that we have to fall back.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Can we change, do we have the authority to change that since we're a government body? Can we get rid of that daylight savings time here in Gaston?
You've got to suspend the rules first.
We don't want to bag our leaves, and we don't want to support daylight savings time. I am, I'm telling you. Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Halloween, everybody. And everybody, I know we've all said, everybody, the cars out there, people driving, just be aware that there are kids, and there's going to be people walking tonight all over the city, especially up in the North Little Falls area. It's not really, there's certain neighborhoods that are trick or treat friendly, and there's some that are not. So if you're up there riding around or driving, just slow it down just a little bit and be patient and be careful. Want to say, this time last year, we were getting ready to come in here. So it's been a great year, educational year. I've learned a lot. I feel like us as a council and this mayor's office and the mayor's administration have got everything kind of turned in the right direction. I feel like we've done nothing but positive moves, and I can't wait for the next two to three, four years after that. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President, I'd just like to mention that Chris Robinson, in addition to not wanting to bag his leaves and not liking daylight, daylight savings time, also wants to put buttermilk in all the vending machines and cap the prices at chicken livers and require only fried green tomatoes for lunch on Tuesdays.
Councilman Ross?
If you don't, I'm going to be disappointed. I like buttermilk. It's a natural probiotic. I keep it in my refrigerator. Nothing wrong with it. Some cornbread from time to time. It's good stuff. Now, as far as the chicken and livers, I have no idea what you're talking about. He's saying I'm old, but I'm not. I'm the youngest councilperson up here, aren't I?
No.
That's what I love about politics. I'm young in the political world. That's all, Mr. President.
Oh, that's great. It's, enjoy the levity. Mayor Ford, thank you, and to your administration, thank you for all the work you guys are doing. It's, as you've learned in one year, it's, I've always said, this isn't as easy as it looks. It kind of looks easy from, from outside, but when you get on the inside, there's so many moving parts, and it's so, and everything you do affects somebody, and then so that gives more weight and gravity to every decision. So thank you all for how you're going about conducting city business. I think we're a better city than we were 12 months ago. And I agree with Councilman Smith. We're, I think, the best is yet to come. So just keep doing what you're doing. And, you know, we're catching up with you. I think you've always said you don't have any breaks, you know? So there are no breaks. So we're, I think we're getting in shape. So we're catching up. But we really appreciate what you guys are doing. There's a lot of good stuff happening. Want to echo the Halloween, be careful tonight. A lot of, a lot of little feet running around. They're going to be going zigzag, and they don't walk in straight lines. They run and they zigzag. So anticipate when you're driving. And also want to mention something that you, everybody's probably familiar with the Edgewall County Food Bank, and Marie Johnson is the new executive director, not super new, but maybe four months or so. She is doing a fantastic job. Y'all, there's a, there's a kind of a crisis looming, and it's almost here, or it may be here already. But the price of food, as we all know, has just skyrocketed. And then the federal government subsidies and how they allocate those funds for food has shrunk. And so that, that leaves a gap, and that's where the Edgewall County Food Bank, along with numerous churches, become a real helping hand. Most of those entities that are helping feed get their food through the Edgewall County Food Bank, who gets the food from the Birmingham Food Bank at a much reduced price. So Marie Johnson has done a great job organizing, reorganizing that, that entity, and it's just doing really, really well. So much so that on November the 2nd, I believe that's a Thursday, Thursday night at Titan Stadium, and this is a real neat partnership, and I'm going at length to say this because it's an open invitation from Ms. Johnson, but the Gaston City High School Titan Band is going to do a free performance at the, at Titan Stadium at 6:00 next Thursday night on, no, this, excuse me, this Thursday. Thank you. November 2nd, this Thursday at 6:00 at Titan Stadium. And the only admission is please bring like some canned goods or some dried goods for the food drive. And then all that food will be housed.
They have won, I know of two awards where they went to competitions and they finished the very top at both competitions. I think one in Russellville and I forget where the other one was, but they are an excellent band. The band director's coming, I think, next Tuesday to talk. We've been trying to highlight various departments and coaches and things at Gaston City High School. So Chris Benedetto will be here next week, outstanding band director. He's just doing a great job. And so this Thursday night, six o'clock, go to Titan Stadium. You'll be entertained with a great band, band show, and you can bring some goods to donate. Now, if you're interested in your organization partnering with the Edgewall County Food Bank, just call Marie Johnson, and you can be a church, you can be a club, an organization, you can be a family, an individual, whatever you want to do to promote people coming to an event to donate food to the Edgewall County Food Bank, Marie Johnson is open to listening to your call and would love to work with you. So as I said, this winter is going to be hard for a lot of families, so we need to think about that and be mindful of our neighbors and our, and our elderly probably who are on fixed incomes. This is going to hit people that maybe hasn't, have never been hit before with this kind of a problem. So I think as a community, this is a great chance for us to rise up, meet that challenge, meet that need, and Marie is such a great organizer. She will funnel you through anything that, that you want to do. If you have an idea of how to feed those that are less fortunate, please contact Marie